Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Byrd Bennett, Board President, Vitaly and other Board members. My name is Opal Walls. I'm here today to talk about our Minority and Women-Owned Business Program. I'll give you a little history on how our program came to be, our objectives of the program. Kareem Burgess will join me and begin to talk about the goals and the progress we've made on the goods and services side. Polly Makris, who's our Construction Manager, will join me and talk about her slide with regard to construction, the numbers that we have, and what we're doing in that arena. We'll then wrap up with next steps on how to expand and improve our program. In 1991, there was some evidence presented to the Board that said there was some discrimination with regard to African-American, Hispanic, Asian, and women-owned companies. The Board determined that, based on that information, there was sufficient basis and compelling interest to implement and adopt a minority and women-owned program. In 2004, the city of Chicago looked a little further into this process and decided to split the program on a construction side and a goods and services side. The Board took that lead and did the same. In 2007, the Board implemented a new goods and service policy, and we commissioned Dr. Blanchflower, who is an expert in this industry. He's an economist, and he helps to look at our data, where we spend our dollars, and he comes back with recommendations as to how we can better improve our program and actually assess goals with regards to our program. Right now, on both programs, we have a 30 percent minority participation goal, and we have a 7 percent women goal. We expect, as Dr. Byrd Bennett said, that in June, we will have all of that information that Dr. Blanchflower is preparing for us. We'll come back, present, and let you know what his findings and recommendations are. We don't anticipate any significant changes to the program. However, we do want to make sure we are in sync with whatever numbers and goals that he says we should have. Next slide, please. What we do when we look at our contracts is we look at all solicitations from our procurement department, and they get us involved early on, and we assign contract-specific goals. We don't just set blanket goals where we say, "We're going to do 30 percent or 7 percent." Those are overarching goals for the programs itself. But we do look at contract-specific goals. For instance, we have service contracts on our landscaping side, custodian side, where we know that there are more companies out there. So those types of solicitation lends themselves where our numbers would be higher. So we've also, in the past, what we've done is we've looked at landscaping, for instance. Years ago, we had one company that actually did the entire contract for our district. We intentionally broke that contract into small sections and areas throughout the city where the landscaping contract itself, then, we had 13 to 15 minority vendors performing services throughout our communities. We also monitor and report on compliance. So we look, we get information from our Oracle database on the spend, and we look and make sure, as I said, that we're meeting those goals based on the paid amounts to those We conduct extensive outreach efforts. We held forums and seminars for our minority and women-owned companies, and we reach out to them to let them know in advance when these solicitations are coming up so that they can prepare themselves to bid or propose on those solicitations. I'd now like to ask Kareem to come up and go over the slide on goods and services, please.
Thank you, Opal. Good morning, President Vitaly, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I am Kareem Burgess with the Office of Business Diversity. In regards to the district's performance as it relates to MBE and WBE participation in the goods and services industries, the district is realizing currently 31 percent for MBE participation and 13 percent for WBE participation, which actually exceeds the aspirational goals. However, the Office of Business Diversity has noticed a downward trend in the WBE participation from years past. So while we are exceeding the WBE goal, it's difficult for me to view that as a success due, in fact, to the part that it's a, it represents a decrease, a 4 percent decrease from where we were last year. So for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 13, I've placed a challenge on myself to put more focus on our WBE category and try to engage those women-owned businesses in areas where I know that participation can be realized in an effort to get that trend to swing in an upward motion as opposed to trending down as it currently is. So again, while we are realizing our aspirational goals, we also understand that we can do much better. Some of the areas in the goods and services industries, like Opal mentioned, include landscape maintenance, custodial management, food services, so on and so forth. So we believe that there are significant areas where our women-owned participation can be increased and can be realized, and we'll definitely look into doing our part to ensure that that WBE participation increases. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Polly Haridos-Makris, and I'm going to talk behalf of the construction arena. The aspirational goals, as mentioned by Opal, are 30 percent MBE and 7 percent WBE. FY12 was one of the busiest construction years that we've had here at CPS. We paid out over $457 million in construction and construction-related services, which includes also our construction manager, project director, program manager, architectural services, et cetera. We are boasting at this point in time, as you can see on our slide, that we've exceeded our goals in FY12 and achieved 31 percent MBE and 13 percent WBE. I did, though, want to point out to you some analysis and findings that we've done. The majority of the MWBE participation on our construction contracts is performed on a subcontractor level. My goal is to build the capacity of plenty of, a lot of our subcontractors and increase them to become prime vendors, as that is always our goal in business diversity. There's also been a steady increase in women-owned businesses pursuing opportunities in the construction arena. There's been a huge reduction of waiver requests due to more feasible contract-specific goals based on the scope of work and the availability of willing and able subcontractors in the industry. I just wanted to point out some major goals that we have and future expectations. Business diversity is in the development stages of administering a new software solution called B2G Now that will provide transparency in payments to the prime contractors and their subs. It will be a mechanism of checks and balances to ensure that vendors are getting paid accordingly, open lines of communication between general contractors and their subs, and also provide online status of all payouts from CPS. And also, when the district advertises opportunities, B2G Now will also serve as a tool for outreach to all our certified MWBE companies, shooting out an alert to these companies certified in their specialty arenas. At this point, I would like to finish off by inviting you all on January 9th to our Business Vendor Fair that Facilities will be hosting along with Business Diversity, and that will be on January 9th at the Old Powell School. Thank you.
We'll just finish up and wrap up on the last slide. As Polly mentioned, one of the upcoming improvements that we will make will be to implement our B2G software. It's business-to-government. All of the other sister agencies have this software. The vendors are used to using this software. When a payment is downloaded from our Oracle system, we will pull that information into the software. We'll be able to see that a prime was paid on a contract, and then the subcontractors on that contract will be able to go in and say, "Yes, I received a payment from the prime." Oftentimes, we hear that our subcontractors are not paid on time. That concerns us. We want to make sure that these small businesses are paid timely. We're paying their primes on time, so they should be paying their subs on time. This system will allow us to track and, as Polly said, actually communicate with our subs and other vendors to ensure that that's happening. We can also outreach. We'll be able to query the system. If we have a janitorial solicitation coming up, we'll be able to say, "Give me all certified janitorial companies in this arena." We'll be able to let them know in six months, nine months from now, we'll have a solicitation so they can get their ducks in a row and, again, be able to submit proposals. We also plan to meet with other companies in the industry, i.e. Walmart, who are actually, I believe, meeting with them today. Vice President Ruiz has set that meeting up. We understand that they have an excellent supplier diversity program, so we want to learn from other companies as well and see how we can better improve. We will continue to collaborate with other sister agencies, the Chicago Urban League, HACEA, for instance, and understand their best practices. And lastly, but not least, we want to engage the Board members. We want to have more frequent conversations with you with regard to this program and understand what you want to see from us. We want to utilize your wealth of information and resources to ensure that we continue to expand and improve this program. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, Opal. Thank you, Kareem, Polly. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions for Andy?
Just a comment. I appreciate a couple of things. One, the recognition that you can do better, because I think that's important. You have met your goals, and that's great, but keeping an eye on doing better is important. And so I appreciated those remarks from your staff. Secondly, I also want to commend you on continuing to look at best practices in the field and meeting with others that are doing that. I think that's really important as well. So I just wanted to thank you for the efforts that you're doing, and as you know, me as a member of the Board and as a CEO of the league are here to help you provide whatever assistance we can in encouraging and ensuring that we create opportunity for our diverse vendors and our women-owned businesses as well. So thank you.
I appreciate your help.
Jess. It's great we're going to have more information in terms of timely payment, and, you know, having represented minority-owned businesses in my private law practice, that is a complaint, that is a concern, that they get squeezed and frankly don't get paid in a timely fashion. What are we going to do contractually with our primes now that we're going to have this information in terms of ramifications? If you have it, nothing comes of it, it doesn't really optimize its purpose of having it. So are we going to alter our contracts with primes and saying, "If you have a record of, frankly, trying to take advantage of your subs and not paying in terms of tardy payments, will we have some recourse against them?"
This policy actually calls and allows for sanctions against those types of actions.
Financial sanctions?
Exactly.
Exactly. That's the kind they work best.
So with this program, we really are at a disadvantage right now because we come in after the fact. We don't know that payments are being received until someone picks up the phone and lets us know. But with this system, we'll be able to see forward-looking. As soon as a prime gets paid, that sub should be able to go in and say, "Yes, you paid him $10,000. I got $1,000 of that." So we'll be able to take a more, like I said, forward look and get it in front of the process, where we're not able to do that right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
But we can apply sanctions. We can take it as far, and Mr. Beverly, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we see that this is continuing, we'll call the vendor in, and they're not performing on the contract, as we said, and we have no, we won't let them continue on the contract. We can always terminate for cause.
So it's part of our contract terms that we have that recourse?
Absolutely.
And there is some formula in terms of what the sanctions may be, or maybe we should develop them so everybody knows going forward and, you know, with full information from the very beginning, what the ramifications of their actions or inaction in this case may be.
General nonperformance is typically a reason for default, but in this situation, over time, that type of behavior can make a contractor non-responsive and ineligible for to compete in future businesses.
Thanks.
Other questions for Opal? Thank you very much. It's an important effort for the system. I know we also make efforts beyond that to make sure that even when we have professional firms like yours, Jesse, that we actually push them to provide minority professionals to work with us. So it goes beyond just these contractual programs, and we appreciate your support in pushing that agenda, and we look forward to the update and the reauthorization of the plan in the spring. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And finally, earlier this year, CPS presented to the Board our proposal for FY13 budget that included information on capital projects. Despite our current fiscal challenges, we believe it's imperative that CPS continue to make the requisite capital investments in order to provide all students a safe, welcoming, modern learning environment. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Tim Colley, who's the Chief Administrative Officer, for an update on the progress of some of our key capital projects that are underway.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd Bennett, members of the Board. I should start with saying that Pat Taylor, our Chief Facilities Officer, would have liked to have been here to present. She manages this area for us very well, but she's home quite ill, so she's asked me to step in for her. As Dr. Byrd Bennett said, we committed to you, not just this year, but every year, to come before the Board and to be accountable for the performance of investing the Board's dollars in improving our school facilities. So we will do that every year around this time and let you know how our season of construction went. Next slide, please. Today, this, I'll very quickly let you know that we had a very substantial construction year this year with over $400 million of projects that went on. Now, much of that had been authorized in prior years, and you may recall from May that we have significantly reduced our capital plan for fiscal 13 and beyond in recognition of the very challenging financial situation that the Board is currently in. But that doesn't mean our work from the past had to stop. We needed to continue to upgrade many of the schools that needed our investment, and we took you through in May the criteria for those investments. So this isn't to revisit all of that. It's good to know that 131 of our schools benefited from this investment. Now, we're here to talk about accountability, and I'm happy to report that our cost controls, the way we've scheduled, the way we've anticipated and planned, have allowed us to improve our performance on both cost and timing, and I'll show you the data on that. And I'll walk you through very quickly some of the best practices that we're embracing now to improve this even further going forward. And this is consistent with what we're doing in all operations and administrative areas throughout the district to drive more efficiency, to keep as much of our funds in the classroom helping students as we possibly can. So that requires us to be more efficient in all operational areas, and certainly, construction is one of the major ones of those. Next slide, please. This slide breaks into categories where we're spending our money, and you can see, just going around the pie chart, starting at the bottom, the major renovations, which would be the exterior envelope, fixing the masonry, replacing a roof of a school. A school improvement is a broader project, which would be that plus mechanical improvements. In many of those cases, dehumidification or air conditioning would go in, which we know is something that every school welcomes when it's their turn. For the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA at the top of the pie, we spent about $55 million in 13 of the projects this year. And of course, this is elevators, ramps, new doors, which is often an important investment throughout a school to change the accessibility, and changes in the bathrooms. Interior renovations would be painting and flooring, new labs, things like kitchens and lunchrooms would be in that category. Pure mechanical projects at about 2:00 on the chart would include boilers, but also lighting and plumbing. Many of our schools, you know, the average age of our schools is 74 years. So many of our schools are well past their projected life on some of the mechanical systems and need this investment. And then finally, there are about 80 projects. There are a lot of different things. We did 23 playgrounds this year to prepare for the full school day and the expansion of recess. We had, unfortunately, had to replace a number of chimneys that were crumbling, and as you can see through the list, it's a wide variety of things that we prioritize across the district and choose the projects that are highest priority in the schools that need that investment. Next slide, please. So when you invest in 131 schools, the chart looks something like this. It's a very wide distribution around the city because there are needs throughout the city. And on the left, you can see by collaborative how those investments fall. On the north side, about $100 million were invested, and I'll talk about one of those projects in a moment, at Rogers School in Rogers Park. On the west side, with significant investment of about $118 million, and one there that is indicative of some of the things we've done, the Cameron School in Humboldt Park, got over $10 million for new masonry, a roof, new kitchen and lunchroom, new library and an elevator. So that's the kind of things that would be in those various west-side schools that received that, and 45 different schools on the west side received investment. The south side, as you can see, is the biggest slice of the pie. This includes the new Jones College Prep School that's being built, of course, just in the south loop, but also a very significant investment of about $20 million in Morgan Park High School, which was a multi-year project, which included a lot of masonry, air conditioning, and investments in a number of areas internally. I should also say that when we do work on things like the roof or masonry, we have other repairs to make, too, because their failure allowed water to get into the school and often seeps into classrooms, into gymnasiums and auditoriums, and creates damage throughout those areas where the water infiltrated. So we then, once we fix the exterior, we can now go in with confidence and paint and refinish floors and make the inside of the school better because we know that that's not going to be thrown away with more leakage in the future. On the southwest side, 30 projects were taken on. It's $139 million, and a chunk of that was the new Back of the Yards High School. As you know, the southwest side is very overcrowded, and we are adding capacity there. In fact, the new Back of the Yards High School, which will be completed for opening this September, is the sixth new school opened in that collaborative in just four years. So we're making very significant investments in the new schools there, but also improving in many other places in the southwest side to expand capacity and to fix things that are starting to fail. And then the far south side is our smallest collaborative. It's only 11 percent of our schools, so that explains the relatively less investment there. But even with only 40 schools, 12 of them received $86 million in investment. So it's a very broad portfolio of activity, and that's why it's so important that we be held accountable to spend this money wisely. So if you go to the next slide, you can see, let me orient you to this chart. This is our cost control, and the bars reflect percentage over or under the budget that is set at the beginning of the project. And that budget's important because once we assign that money to that project, it's dedicated, and it makes us balance all of the different needs around the district. So it's important we not exceed that budget, and it's obviously, and we certainly want to over-budget every project because it deprives other areas of investment. So as you can see, the blue bar is last year's performance, 2011, and the yellow is 2012. And as you can see, in almost every case, we're doing better on cost control. Every area except other is actually better than budget this year, and most of the improvement was better than year ago. By the way, the number under each bar is not the percent below budget, but the number of projects in that category. So in total, we were 6.6 percent under budget this year, and that's an improvement over last year of 1.5 percent under budget. And just to be clear, when we are under budget, we don't just reallocate that money somewhere else. We actually don't spend it so that we don't have to take out additional debt and lower our debt service for the future. So the things that helped us here clearly are designing better in advance, planning these things out so that we don't have cost surprises along the way. Similarly, next slide, please. Timing is affected when you plan ahead well. As you can see here, these bars reflect percent of projects that are met on time. When we do our contract with the general contractor, we set an end date, a completion date, and as you might imagine, it's hard to achieve 100 percent when you have 130 schools being worked on, but we've improved year over year, yellow bar being this past year, blue being the prior year. We've improved year over year, and in total, only 24 projects are behind schedule, and most of them are meeting our goals. And as you might imagine, some projects are on schedule, some are behind, so this is the roll-up of all of those projects. We invested, and you would recall maybe about a year ago, in a new scheduling tool in Oracle that allows us to be much more precise in how we drive our schedules with our contractors, and that's what's leading to the improvement here. So we feel very good about our progress and continuing to make it even better for the future. Next slide, please. Very quickly, on the best practices that we think we're doing, and we're open to ideas of other, if people have other ways for us to improve. One is, we're working a lot more closely with principals and communities. When we do these projects, they're working with us to set priorities, to plan ahead, to make sure that we're not affecting children when we do our work. Secondly, we're setting very clear expectations with people on, here's where there will be intrusion, here's what will get done, here's what we're not going to be able to afford for you, and then we manage to those expectations, and so I think there are a lot fewer surprises. Third, on long-lead items, elevators are a killer. Windows are another, that you have to order size to each opening, and in the past, frankly, we didn't do as good a job of planning ahead, getting the orders in, making the commitments, and having the materials arrive on time. Fourth, we're learning a lot across projects. The scheduling tool helps us do that, and making sure that we're capturing that learning and implementing what we've learned in future projects. Fifth, we're collaborating a lot better with our sister agencies. It helps that Pat Taylor came from CTA, but also working with Water, the other utilities on the city on permitting and making sure that we're all pulling together to do the right thing for the students of our district. And then finally, we talked about this in May when we promoted this budget, we're providing much more transparency. My final slide will show you how we're making every one of these projects that we did over the year available online for people to inspect what was done, what would it cost, why did we feel it needed to be done, and how are we doing on completing it. So significantly more transparency. Now, these projects are real schools that have real challenges. Next slide, please. So I want to bring two of them to life for you. This is Rogers School up in Rogers Park, and it was a substantial exterior renovation. Frankly, the bricks were falling off the building, lot of water infiltration. And so this was completed in one summer, which is important because the students and the families at Rogers, the teachers and the administration, don't want construction going on forever at their school. They like it over and out during the summer. And so with good planning and execution, next slide, please, we were able to get in, scope the work, kind of to link to our last presentation. You'll be happy to know that the primary mason was a firm called Beton, B-E-T-O-N. It's a women-owned business. They had 45 masons on site, taking the bricks off the top of the building, putting them back on, and making sure that we got it done before school opened. Next slide, please. Another problem we came up with in the course of the project was dust bothering the community. And we heard from neighbors and the aldermen that the work on the bricks was creating a dust problem, so we went in, put in scaffolding and netting around it to reduce the dust. So I think it's a show, you know, you can imagine what we're going through with all of these projects. Each school is a significant part of its community, and we're trying to be as responsive as we can to the needs when that happens. Next slide, please. This is Pasteur School. It's down on South Lockwood near Midway, and we show this because one of the things that creates a project going over budget, and you saw there weren't too many of those, or over time, is when you take a roof off of one of these old buildings and find that the structural beams are shot. And so that completely changes the scope of the project, and we build into our budgeting contingency plans for things like that. But this is an example of a very significant structural rework that we had to do at Pasteur that we did not plan in the original scope of the project. This school was built in 1927, so it's not surprising that something like this might be found. In this school, we had another big WBE, women-owned business, called National Painting that was involved, but the roofing company was actually a minority-owned business called Shaw Roofing. So the work of Opal and her team obviously is carrying through into real projects and people who are doing great work for us in getting this done. So once we replaced the roof, we went in, replastered inside, and the students in that school are significantly happier with the appearance of Pasteur. Last slide for you today. This is our website. This shows all of our projects, and it's very user-friendly for the public, for the media, for the Board, for our administrators, for contractors who are interested in the kind of work that we do. Each one of these dots is a project, and somebody can just go on that dot, click on it, and pull up a great deal of information about it, and pull up a great deal of information about what we're doing at the school and why. So I have to close, only because every time I talk about what's going on here, we have to talk about the financial challenges we have. There will be fewer projects in the future. We can't afford to fix every single building we have. We're prioritizing, we're reducing our investment sadly year over year. We have to, we have no choice, but we are, when we do do this, and this presentation's about this, when we do engage, when we do set the priority, when we do launch a project, we hold ourselves accountable to perform well and make the school building safe, warm, and dry for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Questions?
First of all, Tim, I applaud the fact that we're both being much more transparent about what we're doing, and second is, is that you're reporting back. You know, I frequently ask, you know, can you report back to us how it goes? And I think this is very helpful, that we're engaging in both self-reflection and benchmarking in ourselves. As you mentioned, the money does come from borrowing, which makes sense. These are long-lived assets, and so that's, makes sense. But, you know, borrowing $440 million to do these projects, and we're going to be able to do less of them, we still have to keep in mind, it is borrowing money. And so, you know, I just keep hammering on this issue. The more money we borrow, that money comes right out of what we have available to operate our schools. And so figuring out this balancing act in the buildings, and which buildings we invest in, and making sure the ones we choose to invest in, you know, and it's a terrible choice, right? We want to be able to invest in all the buildings. You know, how do you think about which buildings get prioritized, given that we can't do everything all at once?
We have a filter process that we go through that identifies the biggest needs, the schools that are not warm and dry, certainly being able to keep the school heated, so boiler replacement, if a boiler is failing or on the brink of failure, we will replace it. And that's just, we have to do that. We set priorities on buildings that are leaking, where water is infiltrating, and causing damage in the classrooms, or the auditorium, or the gymnasium, or where the kitchen equipment is not working or up to standards. So we set priorities on those things. On playgrounds, frankly, playgrounds in the past would have been a lower priority, but with recess being launched at so many schools, we looked at it and said, that has to be a priority this year. We have to create, we have to create that venue for the kids to play on. So we focus on the compelling needs, safety being number one, we will not tolerate an unsafe situation. Secondly, warm and dry would be, you know, making sure that children are comfortable when they're in class. It's hard to learn when there's peeling paint falling on them. And then finally, educational priorities like labs, playgrounds we think are educational priorities, that go with the programs that we're doing. So we run things through that filter, we look at the condition of every one of our schools, and we prioritize based on that.
Do we have a, I mean, just going to the worst situation, a building that's, you know, either structurally unstable, or you find out you've got beams that are, we didn't even know the problem we had till we opened it up. Do we, how much of that do we have?
Sadly, far too much. Again, with the age of our buildings, we have some that are literally falling down, and we have netting on the building. Chicago Vocational is a perfect example of that. Fortunately, the state has allocated some funds to renovate that beginning next year. We have netting on the building, so that when the bricks do fall off, they don't hit one of our students.
I think we should be aware of the buildings that are not, you know, that don't meet the safety, is structural safety, just so we...
We will be, yeah, there are a number like that. We will, I'll provide you with a list of that. Just to be clear, we will, if a building is in danger of falling down, we will get the students out. If there are bricks falling off, we will make sure they do not reach the ground. But we cannot afford, right now, to go into every one of those buildings that is falling down and fix them, unfortunately. But you're right about our debt service, Board Member Pritzker. We have, we have about, almost $500 million that we're paying in debt service this year, and that is money that is not paying for additional programming, unfortunately. We have $6 billion in debt.
Is there any analysis done in terms of the dollars spent on a particular building and the number of students in the building and those, you know, and kind of going toward their prior discussion and something that we're looking at in terms of utilization, so that you're not putting dollars into buildings that frankly are underutilized and maybe beyond their useful life? And I don't even know if we have a useful life number for a CPS building.
I think one of the reasons, and I know, one of the reasons that we are looking at utilization is unfortunately, we don't get to say no if a building is underutilized. So if a roof is failing, and there are only 200 children in that school, or if the school's not being heated, we have no choice but to go in and spend millions of dollars to fix that school, which is millions of dollars we're not spending in a school of 700 children.
Right.
So we don't let them suffer, even if it is underutilized, and that's one of the challenges. We have over 700 buildings in the district that demand our attention, and we actually don't look at utilization. If there is a danger of safety or not being warm and dry, we have to invest in it.
And is that correct? I thought I'd heard that the average age of a building, our schools are like 74 years?
Yes, that's right.
Is there, is, how much environmental remediation are we doing? We have to go in and do repairs? I mean, are we still finding asbestos in these buildings and have to do costly?
Yes, that's exactly right. So I think you're aware, asbestos isn't a problem if you don't touch it, if it's behind the plaster walls. But as soon as we go in to repair because of a leak and asbestos is exposed, abatement of that problem is very much a problem. Same thing with tiles on the floor. So tiles could be coming up at a school, and as we replace that, it's a significantly more expensive project because of the asbestos.
And then last question is, like, when I saw the roof on, I think it was Pasteur, do we do a white roof that's frankly greener and more energy efficient, since we're taking the opportunity, or is that a new standard? It's a standard in a lot of other businesses.
Yeah, we do look at energy efficiency whenever we do one of these projects, and we hope to save on our energy bills in the future, just, I think silver is the color of choice now for the roof. But the, so we do pay attention to energy, and windows are a big opportunity for us, especially compared on some of these old schools. They actually pay for themselves in not too long of a time. Lighting is another biggie. Our lighting projects pay for themselves in less than two years, as we change out old lighting systems. So that's actually a very good investment for us. We get that money back in energy savings in a short period of time.
On the flip side of what my colleague was saying, I know there's several buildings that we're looking at that are underutilized, that a lot of money had been put into those buildings. How do we deal with that? You know, I can name quite a few. I won't, you already know them. And so I'm just curious, how do you deal with that, when you put that kind of money into buildings and now they're going to be vacant?
I think the fact that this issue has gone on for so long has created a situation where investment had to go into those schools, because the students in those schools deserved a safe place and a warm place to go to school. As you look ahead with the challenge, and we'll defer to the commission respectfully to decide what they think we should do, but certainly a big factor in looking at utilization is to not have so many buildings that need these millions of dollars. We have to think about, every time we take out a loan, to what Ms. Pritzker said, every time we take out a loan, we incur debt service that takes money away from paying for more teachers or librarians. So, so anyway, I think it's a very real issue, Dr. Hines, that we have to think about the number of buildings that we're maintaining.
And on another note, I want to commend you and Dr. Bennett for moving so fast on the Pressing incident. Many of those things don't get heard by the public, but in one of the meetings during the board time, one of the parents came and had a concern about overcrowding, and you all stepped in. So I want to commend both of you and God a teacher for that.
Thank you.
I want to give you a hand for doing that.
Thank you. Well, Pressing is a great problem, which is, they had 23 more kindergarteners show up than we thought were going to show up there, and we're happy that we were able to provide resources for that principal and for those families.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to touch on something that I think is really important, Tim, because you just said that you're going to wait and defer to the commission on this issue. They can't, the commission can't make recommendations on this issue if we don't give them a viewpoint about our position. So I'm, you know, they don't have the information you have about this building, so I'm concerned about us continuing to say the commission's going to solve it, the commission's going to solve it. They can't, they're there to give us expert, independent advice and get community input. They can't do that if we don't tell them the information. So, you know, the points that Dr. Hines was making about buildings we've invested in, that's information they need to have. Now, I don't know if you're providing it to them, or you're going to provide it to them, but it's really important that we don't just stand still and wait for the commission to opine on stuff where we have the better information. So I don't think that's what you meant to say. I don't think you intended it that way, but I just wanted to clarify so that nobody misunderstands.
Yeah, thank you. My understanding is the commission has asked for that information, both on the condition of our buildings and the need for capital investment in the future, and we certainly will provide them with that information. I was more referring to the fact they will come out with their recommendations on buildings. Our next capital plan would be submitted to you in May. We'll have time to digest that, and if there are schools that are recommended for closing or consolidation, those would be schools, obviously, we would not be investing in.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The information has been requested by the commission. We are providing them information relative to utilization, capital repairs, et cetera. But just to underscore what Tim said, there are children currently living in those buildings, and teachers teaching in those buildings, and all kinds of people who work on behalf of our children. So if the building is not warm, if it's not safe, if it's not dry, we are obliged to provide what we need to provide immediately, even if the building is underutilized. This concludes the items, the three items that we brought before the board today, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett. We appreciate it. Couple of quick announcements for everybody. Maybe you've seen in the press, but the system and the Chicago Teachers Union are working collaboratively to develop a single-track calendar for next year. They've requested everybody's input, the public and teachers and everybody else, to ensure that the ultimate calendar reflects the best interest of all students and families. You can respond to the survey that they've asked you to take a look at if you so care, and it's available on the CPS website, www.cps.edu, and you have until the 11th of January to fill it out and respond. Secondly, I would point out that the board's website is up and running, and that our January meeting will be fully transitioned to the new advanced registration process. And, you know, sir, you really should be more respectful of the process going on. You interrupted speakers previously, and you continue to do so. You will have your time, and, you know, I won't accept your interrupting others anymore, Finally, I want to remind you that there will be additional opportunity to meet with board members during our monthly office hours, and that you can, in fact, schedule and request meetings at 773-553-1600. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you noted, for the January board meeting, we will be transitioned to the new advanced process, registration process for public participation. And I'd like to add that that advanced registration for the January 23rd board meeting will start at 8:00 a.m. on January 14th, 2013, and will close on January 18th, 2013, at 5:00 p.m. Beginning in January, only advanced registration will be offered for public participation, and if you have any questions about this process, please contact the Office of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And now we will proceed with two hours of public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and our first group of speakers would be Speaker Number One, please, Damian Espinoza, followed by Speaker Number 12, please, Michelle Taylor. After those two individuals, I will call on Speaker Number Two, Suzette Brown, followed by Speaker Number 18, please, Ophelia Steffek.
Good morning, President Vitale and members of the board. My name is Damian Espinoza. I'm the Vice President of Pressing Elementary, the PTO, and I'm a member of Stanford Children. I want to thank the board, especially Dr. Hines, Tim Colley, and all the staff at CPS for helping our school resolve our overcrowded kindergarten issue, where we had 42 kindergarten students per class. My son, Aiden, is a student in that class. We just found out on Monday that we have now been approved to add a third kindergarten teacher to begin this January. So thank you again. It's important that we take a moment to reflect how our school could have had a classroom with 42 children. Stan has provided trainings for me on how schools are staffed and funded, and furthermore, the recent media attention has shown that my school is not the only school facing these challenges. We must do something about this school utilization crisis. Here are the facts. CPS reports show 12% of schools are overcrowded. In these reports, it also shows that Pressing Elementary's student enrollment is now at 160% of capacity. These reports also show almost 50% of our schools are underutilized. The irony is, due to staffing formulas, we have underutilized schools with overcrowded classrooms. We at Stan call on CPS to make well-informed decisions that ensure all students are in high-performing, fully-resourced schools. Your responsiveness to my school's needs not only has exceeded my expectations, but also has proven that parents, teachers, administrators, and CPS can work together constructively to resolve these important issues. Let's take this time to thoughtfully arrive at good solutions that serve all children, such that they are prepared for a college education. Let's get to work. Thank you again for helping the kindergartners at Pressing Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. I appreciate it, and I'm glad that our office hours, you know, helped you in this process and that our management was responsive to your concerns. So hopefully, we'll continue to get better at being responsive to what people...
It was very timely and effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
And he needs to know that while Tim responded, it was actually Dr. Bird Bennett that said, "Do this immediately."
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett, too.
Oh, I'm piggybacking now. My name is Michelle Rodriguez-Taylor. I'm a parent at Pressing Elementary and a proud member of Stanford Children. Since school started in September, we parents were shocked to discover that our children were in a class, our kindergartners, of over 40 kids each. As a parent, LSC member, community member, having over 40 kids in a class is unacceptable. But we're not here to complain, we're here to say thank you. Last Wednesday, Pressing parents met with Dr. Hines during her office hours. Thanks to her advocacy and support, we were informed that Pressing would receive our third kindergarten teacher. This is an impressive response from CPS to parents' concerns and a tremendous victory for our children. So we're here to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I also must thank CPS's Cara Krantz, Mr. Phil Hampton, Tim Colley, Principal Aaronberg, and everybody behind the scenes that helped make this possible. Finally, we want to thank Stanford Children, who really helped us when it seemed that no one else could. Tonight, our principal is meeting with parents to confirm the new position, and we don't want to take a victory lap prematurely, so I'm here to ask, is there anything the parents need to do now to ensure that we get our other teacher ready in January?
Done.
Oh, yes! I had to hear that. Thank you, thank you.
And good luck to your children as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker then, please. Speaker Number Two, Suzette Brown, followed by Speaker Number 18, Ophelia Svitek. The next speaker then would be Speaker Number Three, Pamela Sims, followed by Speaker Number Four, Salem Yucan, and then Speaker Number Five, please, Tim Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Suzette Brown, and I'm a parent at Roe Clark Math and Science Academy, one of the Noble Street campuses, and I'm also a member of Stanford Children. My family and I live in the West Humboldt Park neighborhood. I was lucky to discover Roe Clark Math and Science Academy down the street from our home, and I enrolled my son, Christian, there two years ago. As a parent, I look for schools that have an excellent curriculum and a safe environment. Roe Clark has both. It's much more than a high-performing school... more than a high-performing school. It's also a community center. My son, Christian, stays after school to get help with his homework. He plays sports, and also participates in other enrichment activities. High-quality schools like Noble teach students so much more than just academics. They prepare them for college, for life, by instilling traits like promptness, professionalism, and personal accountability. When you walk into the building, you see right away how proud the students are to be there. No wonder Noble campuses are the highest-performing non-selective high schools in Chicago. Our teachers support us and get involved in our lives, in and out of school. Christian's advisor has even come over for dinner and gone to church with us. My son's dedication to school has motivated me to go back to college and earn my degree, and I hope to in turn motivate him to do his best and continue his education. I am thankful for the Noble campuses. Education is key to improving our communities. Please support more high-quality option schools in our communities for our students, like West Humboldt Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I had the opportunity to visit your school earlier this year, and you've done a great job describing what I saw. Thank you very much.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker Number 18, Ophelia Svitek. Moving on, Speaker Number Three, please, Pamela Sims. Last call for Pamela Sims. Next speaker, then. Speaker Number Four, Salem Yukan, please.
Good afternoon, President Vitale, and the board members. My name is Saleem Yukan, and I'm the Vice President of Concept Schools, which is the organization that proposes to open two new charter schools in Chicago in the fall of 2013. This is a strong application coming from an organization with successful track record, serving 10,000 students in 27 schools, not only in Chicago, but also across the Midwest. Not long ago, CPS used to have a top-notch, high-quality application and approval process for charter schools. Then this was being used as an example around the country. But unfortunately, that was not the experience we had with this application cycle. Therefore, I would like to propose, I'd like to pose a few questions to the board members, and I think you would be interested in the answers if you aim to have or reclaim what CPS once had, which is a quality, transparent application process for charter schools. My first question is, why did we not get a written response regarding our application yet? My second question is, why did CPS staff look at the 2011 school performance data rather than 2012 data, which was available and public during the process? And my third question is, why CPS staff was not able to provide the details of the data by which they determined that CMSA, our Chicago school, did not meet the replication criteria? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker, then, will be Speaker Number Five, please, Tim Williams, followed by Speaker Number Six, Emma Segura, and then Speaker Number 43, Gail Storm from Ames Middle School. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Vitale and the board. I thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak. My name is Tim Williams. I'm a parent of seven children, one who graduated with the first class of Walter Payton Prep School, another who dropped out in his second, third year of high school due to drugs and social distractions. I have two CPS high schoolers that are attending von Steuben, one with honors, and another one that's doing very well. I also have three, one in kindergarten at George Armstrong, one in third grade, who's an honor student, and I have one who is a seventh grader and struggling to fit in. I'm a product of CPS. I went to Oglesby, Stag, Guggenheim, and Calumet, and I graduated from Evanston Township. I've been to college. I've done some job training, and I've also done some work to become a substance and alcohol abuse counselor. And I also graduated with a bachelor's degree from Moody Bible Institute. I am an urban minister, and I work as a chaplain with ceasefire in the Rogers Park neighborhood, in the Uptown neighborhood. I am currently a member of Good News Partners, a homeless ministry in Rogers Park, and I am also a member of Presbyterian USA, of whom I got a $76,000 grant to do work in the community. I have come through this system of education. I know the times have changed since I was in school, but sometimes, but something occurred in my daughter's sixth year of school where she was greatly, her ability to learn-
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. Excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had to transfer her to CMSA. CMSA is a school, a charter school, that's right around the corner from me. The reason that I'm saying this is that something happened where my daughter was bullied in her sixth year of school, so bad that I had to take her out of school. When I put in this charter school, she's been able to focus, she's been able to have some one-on-one attention. It's just been a better environment. And I know that CPS does good, but I also know that some of these charter schools, especially CMSA, has been a great addition for my family and for my daughter. Thank you. Sorry to take your time like that.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, Emma Segura, followed by Speaker Number 43, Gail Storm. They will be followed by Speaker Number Seven, Allison Burke, then Speaker Number Eight, Cynthia Woods, then Number Nine, Deborah Black, please.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm a parent at Ames Middle School, and also I'm parent mentor, and also I'm an LSC member, and we're here to fight for our school. They wanted to make our school a military school, and we don't want that, of course. But, you know, we, I don't even know how to say this, we want our school to be a community school. And we did a survey, and we gave, we gave Mr. Vitale a copy of the survey of the community, what they want, and the community said that they wanted a community school, and that's what we want. We know that Nixon and McAuliffe, sixth graders, are going to Ames. And if you guys make it a military school, where are our kids are going to go? So we try to, we want our safe, we want our school to be a community school, not a military. So if please, help us. And we know we, a month ago, they had a plan not to make it, but now we understand that we, they do have a plan to make it a military school. So we want to know what's going to happen. Thank you.
You know, Miss Segura, I told some of your fellow parents a little while ago, there are no plans to change Ames Middle School into a military school, and I will tell you the same thing. There are no plans to change Ames. So sometimes you have to stop listening to all the rumors in the neighborhood. And if you want, you can give me a phone call to find out if anything's changed. I don't want to force you to come down here every, every so often to find out. But I'll tell you again, there are no plans to make Ames Middle School a military school.
The alderman is saying things about that, so that's why we wanted to make sure that, you know-
It's okay. Well, you should feel free to call me the next time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. We really do appreciate this. You're giving us a voice as well as confidence to come to you and tell us, and tell you. I'm a parent mentor, a grandmother, and a mother at Ames School. We have an alderman that's telling us our school is going to become a military school. I don't have nothing against military. We just don't want Ames Middle School to be a military school. One person says, "No, it's not going to happen." Another person says, "Yes, it is going to happen." Alden Martinado is telling people, the community, where he doesn't communicate with us, that it is going to be a military school. We need help to keep him out of this. We need help to make him understand, we don't want a military in our school. Ames is a very beautiful school. You're welcome to come and visit anytime. It's a community. Everybody loves it. We have new, sorry, we have a new principal, we have new staff members, and we're having more parents come in and volunteer. We just, we're asking you, please, just leave our school alone and go to a different school. Please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next speaker, then, please, Allison Burke.